And.
Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as all.
Evening. We're not due without the microphones today and. See how it goes. Uh, today is Monday, June 2nd, our regular board meeting and this meeting is being recorded. Uh, we need to approve the minutes from last. Uh, actually first, we acknowledge. Tracey's passing.
Oh, yeah.
Mike, do you want to say anything about his service to the village? Mr. Tracy, Rini's father.
I, I, I was on the board when.
A service in August, in August, he's been at this service.
But she was a DPW employee.
He was a, he was a.
And a former.
Long time employee.
He was my, he was my.
Surviving the longest serving uh, life members of the park. Thank you.
So I think he is, he has passed and we're gonna make sure the flag goes.
Did we send a part of condolence?
I did from the board. I did.
Oh, you did. Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, we need a.
When did Jerry pass away?
A few days ago.
I didn't reserve.
I didn't know until.
Just like six weeks.
Yeah.
Is there any newspaper?
I don't know that. I saw in the paper. She posted something on, online. And uh, but I didn't see anything in the paper on Sunday.
Uh, we need a motion to approve last meeting's minutes. Uh, they were not in the board packet for review, but I did just put them in the uh, in the board drive. Uh, Tim.
Other than the few spelling corrections that were very minor, I suggest that I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second. All in the paper.
Hi.
We just wanted all board members to um, speak up when you say that so we don't end up with errors.
Yeah, we don't have the blanks. Yes.
Right. Thank you.
Do you want to do warrants, et cetera? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think that's the way of May 27th that he was eighty three years old.
Thank you, Mike.
Brian, did you want me to read the?
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Yeah, we can do it. It's here. Yes. Alright, um, warrant number twenty five ENC, um, general totaling uh, fifty thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-one cents. Water totaling twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and twenty cents. Sewer totaling eleven thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents for a grand total of eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Uh, payroll totaling a hundred and twelve thousand, uh, uh, seven hundred and ten dollars and sixty-one cents. No transfers.
Make a motion to accept the force.
I'll second. All in the paper.
Hi.
There was a lengthy discussion last month or last meeting about uh, the youth director position or yeah, youth director position. Uh, the second applicant who had applied has since withdrawn. Uh, so um, uh, I would like to, so there's two steps to this. Uh, because we have an organizational meeting every July, this will be a, a temporary appointment until that meeting. Uh, and then we have to reappoint in conjunction with our organizational meeting. Um, and uh, as all of our employees, uh, especially ones involving kids, will have to go through a third-party independent uh, background check. But pending that, I will uh, motion to uh, appoint Phil Nevens for youth director and the salary is seventy-five hundred plus per hour when park is in session.
Wasn't that posted for six thousand? I thought I had it posted. I said it posted for six thousand.
Um, I don't know. Dom has in the minutes here, seven, please.
Is it the posting that uh, that I saw um, since? I can pull it up.
I feel like there's a new budget here. We did change it.
Mary Jane, could you just verify that near in the bucket?
Yeah, it's seventy-five.
Okay, so that was uh, uh, from. What was that?
More official than the post.
Yeah.
Seventy-five hundred. Need this second. Second. All as a paper.
Hi.
Uh, he um, seconded it. Seconded it. Um, Brian made the motion.
I made the motion.
Did everyone vote in favor? Did you hear everyone? Again, just a nice, strong eye. Thank you.
For the last five years, I think we have been with Comp Alliance for liability and workers' comp, uh, workers' compensation. Since that uh, that policy is up, we went shopping and uh, Perma, who's uh, more of a mutual insurance company, gave us a far better rate. Uh, instead of Comp Alliance, it's a hundred and two thousand per year. Perma is eighty-two thousand, two-ten per year, and they will rate lock that for the next three years. And speaking with uh, our insurance agent, Perma is actually a, a stronger company financially. Uh, and so it is my recommendation that, that the policies of July. And uh, it is my recommendation that we move our insurance to Perma.
I have a, have a questions for her. Uh, within what they drafted here for the quote, when they listed out class codes to the different types of jobs. And they charge, and they have a rate based on the type of jobs, one of which is sewer plants, we don't have. Um, they also list um, waterworks, which I don't know if.
We do not.
We do. Yeah. So that's another one. And uh, I mean, the, the other one, street maintenance, we do. Uh, police, clerical, attorneys, recreation, yes and no, because I mean, the actual position is they, it's a, it's a, it's a youth coordinator. It's not really a recreation position. So I'm not sure how, if that would apply. And we also don't do street clean. Don't we contract that out?
Uh, so it depends. We, we, and last year Gary Jeffries certified to run the machine, so we borrow a colony. You know, and we did that ourselves. But because it's not a routine business, it's like a one-day thing that we do.
Yeah.
Bob Dignan ran through all of our jobs and, and compared it to all of their list, and this is where.
Is there any way we could have them just say, you know, because we don't have a sewer plant and we don't have waterworks and.
Probably from the water guys and the sewer guy.
Well, that's, that's, I, I, if they, if, if that's a broad brush for waterworks, water and sewer, I mean, we have a water department. Well, BPW would, you know, like, that would fall under street maintenance and, and uh, municipal employees, I would suppose. I mean.
Yeah.
And that, which is also kind of now that you have street maintenance, paving, and then municipal employees, that's like a broad brush for everybody. So if they are actually talking.
Well, so if you look at basically what they're, if you, if you look at how, if this is how they're rating some of the responsibilities that we do. So for instance.
Right, but if we don't do it, that, we shouldn't be charged on that particular type of job.
Well, so for instance, the sewer plant, we do sewer jetting. For Alliance. That's gotta be.
It's not a plant, that's.
It's the job classification code, Tim. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I know what you're saying, but can we ask if that really, really applied? I mean, to me, that's still, that's still.
So the weighted amount that goes to sewer plant is a hundred and thirty-five dollars of the premium.
Those could be just like circles, everybody.
Generic descriptions, right? They're not gonna say just sewer jetting.
Right. You know what I mean? Like just broad, everything kind of falls under it.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm concerned that they see we, there's a sewer plant here, but those.
No, they're aware we don't have a sewer. They're aware of our entire operation. Street paving, for instance, uh, that's, that's uh, street maintenance is snow plowing.
Yeah. No, I, that I get. I don't, I don't question that one.
You know, refuse is refuse. Street cleaning is, is, you know, it could be a number of different things. Including streets. So.
I mean, we don't, I mean.
You'd like to hold this for that?
I, I, could we please, is that okay? If that's okay, until we can like, get some kind of confirmation. I mean, I know it's only small, not on each of those lines, but. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, what's next? Southern Water and Sewer Project update. We met again with the contractor Newcastle Construction and went over some initial plans for the project. Uh, we showed them the sites around the village, village-owned parcels that they can use for staging. That's gonna make the job far more efficient since they can stage materials and equipment there. Those locations are Kingston Street, Hampton Street, and the corner of Hutton and Amsterdam. Uh, they expect to be fully operational by mid-July. They will start to stage and start to lay out some uh, signage and such uh, just after the fourth. But dirt will be moving by mid-July. Whenever that second week is after the holiday. There will be a dedicated page on our website that says Southern Project. It will have uh, updated information as to where they're going to be over the next course of the week and basically like a running log of the things that they'll be doing. Uh, also all the contact information in case there's issues will be there so that you can uh, uh, report any issues to the village clerk. Uh, and um, and keep updated with all the information. So.
Have questions, Brian?
Yeah.
Maybe supposed to be.
Uh, hopefully by next week. Okay, we talked about the village on parcels that were on Glenwood, specifically the pieces that we were going to sell a portion of to the abutting neighbors. Uh, the appraisal came back for that parcel in total. And that appraisal was eleven thousand dollars, so the two pieces themselves are fifty-five hundred each. Um, and so in addition, we were creating a ten-foot path on the high side. Uh, which is.
The western side.
Towards the western side, yes. And actually, it, it, it will uh, it will be a better transition uh, up there. So uh, I would like to begin the process of, we have to list the parcels as surplus and then authorize the lot line adjustments to create essentially three parcels. Well, to create one, one parcel, move the lot lines for one of the parcels to create the ten-foot right away, and then move the lot lines of each of the uh, abutters who wish to purchase those parcels. Uh, the, the um, the financing of which we're still working out with Steve to see if there's a way to, if the village was to sell them to put uh, for instance, an amount on their tax bill each year rather than if, uh, if they did not want to pay one month sum, but to give them the option. Um, Steve's trying to work that out. Um, but I wanted to start on some of the legal work just to, to essentially create the parcels that would then create, we would create a purchase and sale agreement with the abutters if they agree. And uh, and then uh, that would start the process to do the paperwork for the lot line adjustments.
So do we need a resolution first to declare the lots?
We do.
Fifty-two and uh, forty, forty-six?
Yes. So the village would retain the parcel that's in the middle for, at least until, you know, until such time as we decide what to, what to do with that piece.
So I, I have a question related to that. So I'm one of the neighbors that lives on that side. This is Dara Blanchett. Um, who would I contact to figure out if that changes? Like, so if I paid it outright, is it gonna change the assessment for taxes on my property? Like, are my taxes gonna go up now that I have additional property? Who would I contact about that question?
So uh, my understanding is that the um, the, the, the current value of, of the par, of the parcel would add like maybe a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars towards your assessment based on the market value of that property.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Yeah. So essentially, it, it, it may be for you like fifty dollars more a year. Uh, but I'll run through those numbers uh, with you so that you'll know for sure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I'll do the same thing with um,
Heather?
Heather. Yeah, thank you. On the high side. Uh, I'm sorry, so. We have a motion to start that process.
I'll make a motion.
What exactly is this motion right now, currently? Just to.
To. To declare, yes, to declare that those partial sizes.
I'll second.
All as a paper.
Alright.
And then the uh, the second motion would be to begin the process to negotiating contract for the sale of each of those two parcels to the abutters and creating the ten-foot right away for the park.
Would that uh, uh, would, who would be negotiating on behalf of the village?
Well, so, so the, the appraisal becomes the document that, that's the value that the, when I say negotiating, basically it's simply, here's the price that the appraisal has given to it. Do you want to enter, enter a purchase contract? Steve would then handle the purchase contract with the, with the abutting year.
But he still has to do the, you said, documentation.
Correct.
So is it appropriate to begin that, to, to move on that yet before Steve has done the due diligence on that?
So you're, we're not authorizing the sale, we're authorizing the negotiation of the sale.
Okay.
Sale is probably just something we would then have to ratify once contracts have been signed, assume.
Yeah, I mean, uh, the, the first step would be to, to go to each of the, now that this parcel's surplus, to go to each of the two abutters to, to make sure that it's, it's uh, acceptable to them that this is the price. Here is the assessed change to your parcel. Here is how you can potentially either pay for it or finance it, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion that the village move forward with the uh, process uh, to uh, view and negotiate on the sale of the properties at four to six.
I'll second. All in the paper.
Hi.
Okay, CDT A rideshare agreement. So we've been trying to get additional clarity on on who's using it. It, CDT A does not have details as far as how many subscribers to the, the bike, the bike usership are. They, they don't have it right down to like NANS. They have it by zip code, but not by NANS. So um, in the previous, previous three years, the village has paid five thousand for this, this program. We are in partnership with Albany, Waterbleed, and basically everybody that's Route Thirty-two.
We pay cycle for a year or for the two years?
We've paid, in the past, we've paid five thousand per year. In discussing this with CDT A, they agreed to do twenty-five hundred for years twenty-five and twenty-six, and then twenty-five hundred for year twenty-seven. Uh, and they are going to move if we agree the bike uh, distribution point from the park down to uh, down to bike. Um, and, and so I asked, well, how do we know whether the village residents use them? And she said it's, it's more, it's, it's more than just a bike, a bike person taking, you know, taking a bike for, sure, you could take it for a leisurely um, trip, but it's more to create a, a method for, for anyone wanting to traverse uh, Broadway to not necessarily use a car or, or take a bus. And so uh, creating a continuous web of these bikes all up Route Thirty-two and is, and is part of their continued mission to uh, when they finally, you know, redesign Route Thirty-two as part of the program that we're working on with our other abutting municipalities. So that's why for, for at least the next three years, I'd like to give it another go uh, at the reduced rate to stay part of the plan and stay positive and working with CDT A.
Is there a promotion with that? Some people know. Plan for?
Yes.
Who's, who's doing the promotion?
CDT A. And they just selected a new um, a new executive director.
Yeah, executive director.
Executive director. Who is much better at PR. He's from the L City.
Oh.
I like the idea that you're gonna be at the village.
Yes.
I like that.
It, it'll get more visibility.
Yeah.
Admittedly, the park was meant for the people who were using it to take, you know, leisurely trips. And, but it seems that most people who take leisurely trips have their own bikes.
Yeah.
Uh, and especially originating from that destination, it seems. So um, having it along the corridor that is most used seems to be, we're keeping with using it for alternate modes of transportation, promoting healthy lifestyles and all of that stuff. So that's why I'd like to give it a second. I'm sorry, was there a motion?
Wait, did someone make a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to enter into the agreement with CDT A at twenty-five hundred dollars a year.
Second.
All in the paper. So twenty-five hundred for the first two years and twenty-five hundred. I drove a hard bargain.
Oh.
So. Dom and I sat him in the office and sweated him until they said yes. Uh, the high service reservoir up off of Van Nuys Boulevard. Um, for years, we've been battling with some um, leakage problems up there and while we've tried to fix the problem, we have at least dealt with symptoms and redirected the leaking water away from several houses. It is far drier up there than I think it's ever been. Uh, our neighbors are not complaining like they used to every day. Um, the problem still exists with the, with the reservoir. It's well beyond its useful life. Uh, but we did spend, I think, twenty thousand dollars roughly to, to fix the symptoms and redirect the water, and it's working perfectly. I was up there this afternoon with my dog and it was absolutely dry. Um, so that's a good thing. Uh, the long story is that eventually that tank is going to have to be replaced. They don't allow a tank to be buried under earth anymore. They have to be elevated. And we're looking at somewhere around four million dollars. So we're gonna start a process for get what's called scheduling the, the, uh, the project, to get it on the radar of uh, of uh, the uh, New York State Board who finances these types of things, uh, see how it scores, uh, and then work on some financials for financing. So uh, that's, that's definitely something that's going to be a long-term, a long-term uh, project. Uh, hopefully not as long-term as the South Bend. But we're working on it to get ahead of it.
Is uh, LeBella gonna help us get this first step done or throughout the project?
Yeah.
Ruben, I assume?
Ruben and Ted.
Good.
Yeah. But throwing more money at trying to fix the current tank just doesn't make sense.
More bandits.
It absolutely helps, uh, but it, it just hasn't fixed the whole thing. So.
Right. No, it needs it.
Okay.
Like concrete is porous.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. Uh, the, the, just to, as an example, to fix the main chamber, the largest chamber, which is almost eight hundred thousand gallons, if it's twice the size of what we just spent four hundred thousand first chamber to work, that'd be eight hundred thousand dollars. So that's essentially one quarter of, of, you know, of replacements.
Yeah.
Alright, so under the mayor's report, uh, the monthly edition of the Manance Monthly should have arrived in everyone's mailbox today, if not by tomorrow. Uh, as you may have seen when you came in, they started work on the wall down the first floor lobby. Uh, that, that started. Let's see. Bill Smith has put in his final day at the village last Friday, or yeah, Friday, last Friday. So he is at his camp, enjoying his time away from the village and will be consulting with us when we need him. Uh, we will put together some information and an article in the next Manance Monthly uh, about Bill and his service to the village. We are putting a ceiling fan in the center of the gazebo because it is hot as heck in there when the performers are performing during the hottest part of the summer, which apparently will start tomorrow, according to weather. Um, uh, let's see, what else? On uh, what's the date of, it's June tenth, right? June, June tenth, we will be meeting at the Manance School to discuss some options for redesigning Three Seventy-Eight and its intersection with Route Thirty-two. These recommendations are part of the larger project to uh, reinvigorate Route Thirty-two, Three Seventy-Eight, uh, and then further the connection across the river, the Troy-Manance Bridge. There are a couple suggestions that they have whittled the uh, plans design down to. They'll be sharing those at the Manance School for feedback from the public on June tenth. Tickets, five thirty?
Tickets start at five thirty and it goes to what, eight?
So I, yeah, I had a question. Is it, there's like an actual presentation or it's just like?
It's more like. It's more like um, uh, I will confirm that, but I believe it's more just storyboards and uh, similar to the, the other study they did about the Broadway corridor.
Yeah, the way they, yeah. The way they did those, they, they had engineers and, and answer people's questions. And then solicit comments. They had uh, uh, these documents. You could write down your thoughts and submit.
Yep.
Yeah, they did that with um, Van Rensselaer, uh, when they narrowed that down. So.
But they're great and they, they're very much uh, looking for public input for this. So.
What, what time was that?
The invitation I have says six thirty to eight thirty. They changed the time. Because I got an email about it. Sixties.
Uh, it's, it's on the, the, I know the link is on the, our website, so let me just verify.
Wire says six thirty, eight thirty.
Yeah, probably right.
Yes. Yeah, you're right. Six thirty. Uh, this will include a uh, road diet, which will narrow the road to more of the format of Van Nuys Boulevard. So instead of two lanes in each direction, there'll be one lane plus the middle turning lane. Tropic will be slowed to forty-five miles an hour through the whole stretch. Tropic will be slowed to forty-five miles an hour through the whole stretch down to the intersection, um, and uh, it'll be far safer for bikers and, and walkers and uh, many returning on any of those side streets. So it's, it's really a cool design and I hope, I hope everyone can come and participate. Uh, the village's annual water, water report was posted to the website and the annual report was filed with New York State and Albany County Department of Health. It's available on the website. Uh, Albany County has recent, actually today, has uh, released information about applying for parks grants. Uh, so we'll be looking at applying for a parks grant to improve handicapped parking and sort of paving at Ganzler Smith Park. Uh, where there's limited handicapped and ADA compliant parking. Uh, and the paving is, is not as smooth as it should be for ADA compliance. It's only up to a fifteen thousand dollar grant, but
So good.
We'll be uh, applying for that to apply towards those efforts. Uh, let's see, Simmons Machine Tools coming along with their extension project. They should be putting some more proof stuff on and sides of the building shortly thereafter. Either not, they're ahead of schedule even with the weather. Uh, and I believe that is all that I had. Um, Tim?
Uh, nothing additional to add to that.
No report as well. Sarah?
Uh, nothing additional to add.
All right.
Oh, right. Um, Field Day is this Friday down at Manans School. Um, Monday is the next Board of Education meeting. The pancake breakfast that was scheduled for this past Saturday has been rescheduled to June fourteenth. It'll be at the school, eight to eleven. Inside.
Inside.
Uh, this Thursday, the PTA is also doing a fundraiser over at sixteen Handles and East Green Bush. Uh, I think five to eight. Um, sixteen percent of all the sales will go.
We're back.
Sixteen Handles Frozen Yogurt took over on the floor. Um, and then the senior picnic is June nineteenth.
Thank you, Mom. Uh, does Don have some stuff?
Yes. Uh, Village Registration Day will be held on Saturday, June seventh from twelve uh, PM to five PM in the lobby of the firehouse. If you are not registered to vote in Albany County, you can register on that day. Applications to vote early by mail can be obtained from the village website or the village office. If you are already enrolled in the permanent absentee voting program with Albany County, you do not need to submit a new absentee ballot application. For those who do require an absentee ballot, applications are available on the village website or at the village office. If you have any questions, please contact uh, Don Handerhand, Village Clerk at five one eight four three four two nine two two or by email at DHanderhand@ManansNY.gov. The village election is set for Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, from twelve noon to nine PM on the second floor of the firehouse, right here. Voters will elect two village trustees. Your candidates running for the office of village trustee are Seth Harris, Timothy Lane, Lisa Newman, and Bill Evans. The annual water quality report for twenty twenty-four is available on the website, where copies are available in the village office. Tax bills have been sent out. Those should be in your mailbox momentarily. They are due without penalty by June thirtieth. That's all I know.
And they are available to pay on express.
Yes.
That answered, yeah, we're trying to get it filed to work, but they will be up and running.
Okay. Okay.
When we are up and running, can we work with Jay?
Yeah.
Something on social media.
Yeah, for sure. Mary Jane, do you think tomorrow?
I'm hoping.
Okay.
They were talking today.
Okay. Thank you. And then we're also, I think, gonna work with SHONT, put them as searchable on the website so that uh, they can be pulled up from there as well. Okay. Public comments. Bill?
A couple things. I'm requesting that the village board, uh, no, uh, if the replacement of wooden salt and gravel store sheds are gonna get done in the near future, they should be replaced by new metal or concrete salt and gravel store sheds. The problem with wooden ones, they burn very easily.
Concrete.
By concrete?
Yes.
Because in the Village of Colony, their door sheds are metal. I was given a tour of it from the Village, the Village of Colony.
Metal rusts.
Huh?
Metal rusts.
Metal?
Yeah. Concrete.
Right?
All right.
I'm all for it. Now, I'm requesting that our village board pass and enforce a village ordinance requiring all property owners in Unams to mow their lawns every seven or eight days unless weather conditions support. I'd like to inform you that the village's caution on the north side of Mohawk River has such ordinance in place. There's no reason why our village can't answer before you.
We have a problem. We have it. Lyle sent out a whole bunch of letters today.
All right, because I don't like seeing overgrown lawns and broken.
I agree.
And I'd like to thank our DPW guys for doing a good job repairing of rucks and potholes on east end of Brookside and Dylan Gansamia plus east end of McDonald Circle, Clifford and Glenwood Road. Now, my biggest problem I have is while the village public work guys do an excellent job, you know, taking care of our village, including mowing lawns, doing raking, cutting, brushing weeds. But while in the answer Lily baseball section, I found that our DPW guys mow grass into dugout areas around the round table and concession stands for buildings, thus making my job as official groundkeeper more tougher to get done. And another thing, it creates a great deal of extra work for me to do. And same thing with Karen Long, you know, the president from Manans Lily Baseball Organization. Now, we're getting frustrated about this. I would, I told Don Hanner here about it. I would wish that the public work guys try not to mow into those areas. I'm not doing it. I didn't want to say nev- nothing to PDW guys because I don't want any conflict. I want to avoid conflict, so I felt best to do is report to Don Hanner at the village board.
Okay.
Now, since I'm ready to donate some money to help pay for planning of new evergreen trees and both gases and switch to Pope Park, I'd like to have either one hemlock or spruce tree planted next to the balsam fir tree against the park. When can I be able to donate some money?
So we're working on some uh, moving, uh, installing a, a, um, a bench that was donated as part of the uh, the hundredth anniversary celebration.
Yeah.
So we're gonna work with a group down, uh, down in that area to figure out where the bench should go, where the, where trees, new trees should go and so on and so forth. So soon, Bill.
Now, if, if it's gonna be hemlock and spruce tree, I wanna know because I wanna be the one to personally plant.
All right, we'll work on that.
All right. Now, around seven thirty and, uh, May seventh at Manans Lily Baseball section, I found the doors to store building and men's restroom were left unlocked in nineteen forty. So I locked both doors immediately. I kept the women's door. It was locked. I guess someone forgot to lock it. So I reported the incident to Manans Police and Don Handerhand. Now, Brian Marsh, remember I reported to you about that bookshelf and other junk at the west end of the fire station?
Yes.
Where the green dumpster is and the white colonial door? Well, I don't like to inform you, but that junk is still there. Nothing's been done. I like to know what's.
Just started, like I said, they just started working downstairs, so as soon as that's all done, we're gonna take it all away.
All right, because I'm worried about there could likely be a fire explosion if nothing gets done because having stuff left like that this way, it's a, well, it's a general welfare, health, you know, public, you know, public safety and fire and quality of life has, just can't handle this. All right, thank you for letting me speak. I, I, Brian, I can, I'm willing and ready to wait until early July for you to give me a written reply. I hope that's gonna be enough. All right. Should be enough. And Nick, I'll wait till early July. How's that?
Awesome.
All right, it's fair. Thank you. Let me speak.
Thanks, Mom.
You're welcome.
Yeah, um, I was wondering if the village has a climate action plan? Because I'm concerned that as we're about to experience some extreme heat, there may be some residents who don't have a place to go if it's really hot, if they don't have air conditioning. And um, heat illness, whether it's tooth stroke or what have you, is the worst effect of climate change of all of them. And so I feel that if we have um, preparedness for extreme heat and if we notify the residents where they can go and what will be open, because that would be a big, uh, important uh, role for the, for the village to play now since, uh, what is it, Wednesday? It's supposed to get really hot already.
Are we trying to call up any county, yeah, plan the firehouses listed in Albany County?
So, yeah, so, so we participate with Albany County as a regional group to uh, to address such issues, not just on the cooling side, but on the heating side as well. So this, this establishment here is registered as a, a warning station and a cooling station. Um, so, and there are certain protocols that we had to follow to make sure that we advertise them as such. They are listed on the Albany County website as such. And it's why one of the things that we are going to be pursuing is a grant to make sure that our generator gets updated so that we are ready in case we need one of those two things, you know, in event of an emergency.
I think it's also important for local people to know what the symptoms are, like heat exhaustion and uh, the next step up.
Heat stroke. Yeah.
Yeah, because um, you know, when these things happen, people might not be aware and maybe fragile to them. Um, but it is pretty serious. So I think that would be good whether it goes through a nurse letter or wherever.
Yeah, I think uh, we're gonna work with Jason and put something out on behalf of uh, of the police department uh, to, to make sure that uh, we've done that before and uh, and we'll surely copy it. I never thought we would use it so early.
Yeah.
But it is what it is. And uh, I will make sure we get it on social media as well as the website and uh, and if necessary, at Everbridge.
Good, appreciate it.
Yeah. It's a changing world.
It is a changing world.
Incidentally, spruce trees are not doing that well.
Yeah.
I just had four of them taken down. So if you do replace trees, keep trying to avoid spruce, but just setting.
Uh, I want evergreen trees.
Yeah, well, don't forget ours.
Anyone else? Mike?
Okay, so for someone who was asked about the financial statements that we should put on the website. So I actually went up today and looked at what's there. Three group creation nineteen, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, we have twenty, uh, two thousand twenty audits report, or twenty twenty-four audits report. Or the financial statements that people keep saying we're gonna put out there, but they do nothing.
So we just filed our twenty twenty-four uh, annual financial report. Uh, because of the change in our banks and the change of our accounting system, it took a while to verify the information to put that in a format that Mary Jane is a new treasurer and I as a new mayor felt comfortable signing to make sure. So that report was just filed last week. Uh huh. Uh, so once that is filed with the state controller's office, that begins essentially the basis for our audit. Is that fair to say? Yes. So now our new auditor uh, comes in and will actually audit the entire financial picture. The financial update document or the, you know, financial report is more of a state controller financial guidance report. It's not an actual audit where they, okay. So now the next step is to audit to twenty twenty, audit fully like Tilber or Sherman they used to do for us the, the finances. So BSD will be doing that starting very soon. Very soon. Uh, I met with uh, Brendan Kennedy, the managing partner of that icon last week. Uh, and uh, and he's aware that this is extremely important considering we need this data in order to satisfy the requirements for submitting our final bond resolutions. So uh, once we get this first year with this accounting change, uh, software change, bank changes and treasurers change all set. Doing twenty twenty-fives, audit, AFR, et cetera, which close the period ending by tw- thirty-one twenty-five will be much smoother and much more on time.
So we will see any financial information?
So I, I thought we were starting to push the same document that, that you gave to the board. I thought.
That's what Don was supposed to be mine. Um,
yeah, the only one that was up there was in March. But when I asked him in March, he said, I'll put it up and he put it up in March. There hasn't been one since then. And uh, state comptroller's office recommends that there are quarterly reports.
So that's actually incorrect. Uh, the board is supposed to get monthly reports and the board does get monthly reports. The public can request those documents via FOIL. Uh, why they're not being put on the website regularly since they are a public document, I, I can't explain. I, Don has not done that. He has been instructed to do that, so he will do that. Mike, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, I've been walking around. I have people who are asking questions about what's happening with Hampton Street Park that the, well, Hampton Street land, grass area that uh, the DPW, they mow, but they didn't pay a lot of attention to the other stuff that's there. And recently they came and cut down all of the trees except for one. Is that because it's gonna be the staging area?
That's correct.
Because there's some other, other plant, just the staging area plant?
Correct.
Okay. The village parcel that is behind the garages of the um, River, River Hill is really gross and dirty.
Uh, wasn't, oh, you're not it. Uh, Matt was supposed to clean that up last week. Have you been there recently?
Yes.
That's going to be cleaned up.
I already picked up two bags of cars.
That's like two bags of what?
Cars.
Are they just throwing it over the fence?
Seems to be when they're plowing, they're plowing over the ledge and then the stuff is collecting.
It's in the dumpster.
Say again.
But it's coming from River Hill though.
Yeah, I had an envelope that someone's name.
Yeah, Matt was, Matt was going to go. We already talked about that. Matt was gonna clean that up. I don't know why it hasn't been done.
Their, their fence is in rough shape and, and there's a lot of gaps.
Not existent, actually, and that's why it all blows down.
Right, yeah, you can verify that. You see it every day.
I see it.
Right.
There's a big chunk of fence missing and they don't care because.
And they're people, they're people cutting through and, and it's kind of becoming a little bit problematic with their maintenance over there.
Tim, Tim and I have been down there. Maybe we can uh, talk about putting up our own privacy fence that would uh, be even a little bit.
It should be at our expense to fix their issue.
Their neglect.
Might be, but, but I'm just thinking uh, if, if they're not, they're not required to have fence, so.
I actually, they are required to have a fence around their uh, around their dumpster because that's village code.
Let's rein this back in. Lisa, what else, please?
No, that was pretty much it.
We will, that was supposed to be cleaned up. It, it was on the list to be cleaned up. I don't know if it was. Uh, but it was uh,
Thank you.
It was on the list.
The infinity place. There's always a bunch of them.
There it goes.
There it goes.
Anyone else?
I'll say it to that. If, if somebody could please talk to River Hill, I mean, they really don't maintain a property, so point being is that gate that in the olden days used to slide across on thing, had to work in probably ten, fifteen years.
Which, which gate?
The gate that's hiding, hiding their dumpster.
Actually, oh, really?
And so, yeah, it's not really, you're right, the twice an airport. And then Brian, um, you know, they bungee it up with a bungee cord. In fact, I bungee it up one time about three years ago. Because, so that's all they use is bungee cords. The thing's been bent. They redid bolster fence around the dumpster and the gate is like a ten foot twelve gate. It's a big one that they haven't fixed it down in this place in the city.
Uh, I will, I will reach out to the property manager.
Thank you. Oh, I got one more question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Don.
The um, uh, so for the project, the, the waterline project, we, who do we have on our side of the village that's overseeing the contract?
Luvella.
Oh, okay, thank you.
We're paying them? Well, well. We'll do it.
Yes.
Go ahead.
They will, they will oversee it.
National Broad, ETS.
So another batch of excavation requests came into uh, the office today. Uh, they need to be signed up on by Don, I think. Uh, so he will get to those on Wednesday. Those are essentially their authorization to excavate in a village way. And uh, and they should be started within the next week. They are starting on North Pearl, North Pearl from uh, from eight hundred to the Albany line. Uh, and then Wolfert, while the other crew goes down Route thirty-two towards Albany. So they know they're in our way. Uh, but we're, we're also behind, oh, so we're gonna start on Amsterdam. And we're up. You know, so. By mid-July.
I just, the other day with the power and I was like, I don't know what's going on.
That was those transformers. Anyone else? Uh, we have uh one matter for executive session. Uh, it is a personnel matter. So I will motion to go into executive second for a personnel.
I'll start then.
Hold on a second. All right, any opposed? And we'll be correcting.
Thank you.